Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education's July 8th Work Session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Christie.
Face the flag. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We hope everyone had a wonderful 4th of July. I can't believe we're already into the second half of summer. I feel like this is the part of the summer that school is right around the corner and it's pumpkin spice season. So we are looking forward to school starting back in just a couple of weeks. And before we move on to our agenda, I just want to say that I have heard from several parents over the past month about special education and I appreciate those students or those parents reaching out to me. And I would like for Dr. Brown, if you don't mind, kind of going over, you know, what we have done in the past year for special education. And I do have an ask of Dr. Reiswick and your team. of Dr. Ryswick and your team after we hear a little bit about that, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was fortunate to step into this position in mid-February. So there was a lot of things happening and in the works before I stepped into the position. But just as a summary of some things that have happened, I think since some of the recommendations and your adoption of the resolution last fall, one of the first things we did was we formalized the policy and procedure for the use of private practitioners in the schools. So we've got private practitioners coming into schools now. And that's something, again, we, I have also been involved this spring in working with the Special Ed Council to continue to work on that procedure to make it more accessible. So I talked to Ms. Jones today and everybody is filling out the new forms on the portal and getting ready to go for next year. So that's, that's still making positive headway. We also hired Chelsea Price as our first Student Success Advisory and Improvement Officer. So that was another recommendation that came out of both the task force and, I believe, your resolution last fall was to hire an independent attorney to, to help consult with us and advise us. So we've done that and that's going very well. She's, she's been a huge asset to our division. We developed a KCS way for special education to formalize a student-first approach to developing IEPs, again, trying to normalize that process across the district and really make consistent experience for all of our parents and really focusing on the student-first. More recently, we've been in conjunction with our Strategy Division, we've been doing an overhaul of the complete website, but they kind of did a pilot launch on the Special Ed website to, again, make a more user-friendly experience for parents and families and those needing support through special education. Also, back in the fall, I failed to mention that we, you all approved the contract with ESS, which helped fill a lot of our vacancies and, again, provide better services to our students. With some reorganization this spring, our, we have moved the Special Ed Family Liaison out of our division and actually into the Office of the Ombudsman to increase access for families. And then now, the most recent thing we've done is, is obviously taking some of those willing members of the task force and forming a non-time-bound Special Education Council that I continually work with and communicate with to continue to, as we work to improve our processes, always getting those parent feedback and having their input as we, as we seek continuous improvement in the world of special education.
Awesome. Thank you for that recap. I think we have done some, some great work here. I think we do have a way to go. You know, the resolution was adopted last September, so we are nine months into it. So I would love to see, I know August is, is busy because it's the first week of school, the first month of school. So I would love to, starting in September, getting like a quarterly update and report on where we are. Specifically, I'd like to hear about the progress on the RFP and the strategic planning work we have going on in special education and also on the progress that we're making towards goals on the resolution. So if that's possible, I'd love to see that starting in September.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, absolutely. I'd be more than happy to share the progress we're making. And again, I think, I think, looking through the lens of continuous improvement, there's obviously not a destination, but we want to continue to improve and we're never going to reach a point where we've arrived, but we're going to constantly look regardless of how good or, you know, that we are in certain areas. We want to continue to improve and get better at everything. So we provide the best experience for our students and our families.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I agree. I think it's work that is continuous and that way, with these reports, we can see what's going well, what we have to work on. And I know every year in a student's life, in my life, a year isn't that big of a deal, but in the life of a student, that's a huge chunk of their educational career. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Glad to do it.
Thank you. All right. Well, do we have any requested changes to this meeting agenda? All right, motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, on with our work session. Dr. Ryswick, do you have a report for us?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say too, thank you for asking for that. I think that's work that from, in the Special Ed place that we really want to share, the work that's going on. And I know, you know, appreciate Andrew stepping into that leadership, a little change of leadership. Think we had some pretty good progress starting out. I think there's some great things as, as we've mapped out this summer, kind of next steps and things to take place. So, you know, I look back at things like practitioner partner. I know a number Andrew shared with me the other day was, you know, we didn't have any, like prior to that policy being passed. And last year, we approved 269 practitioner partners to come in and work in schools. I think only six were denied and that was based on not meeting the drug test certification and background certification. So, you know, there is real progress happening. I know it's never fast enough. We agree with that. And so we, we think that's a great idea to be able to update those regularly. So thank you for asking for that.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you also for the chance to provide some updates. I'd like to begin by highlighting some great news. Last month, the Tennessee Department of Education released the latest TCAP assessment data and Knox County Schools saw scores increase in all four categories compared to last year. As you know, we're prioritizing foundational skills. I want to mention two areas that are of particular interest to folks. In our district-wide numbers in early literacy, KCS crossed the 50% proficiency line in fourth grade. That's an important milestone, well ahead of the state averages. It's the highest we've ever had in fourth grade. So 50%, I know that means 50% or not. We get that. That's why, back to continuous improvement mindset, we continue to drive in. But, you know, I've been in the district for over 20 years. We've never been at that mark. So that does show the work is paying off. We also increased third grade reading proficiency, again, to 43.5%. That's an unprecedented 5.2% increase over two years ago. So we've seen that grow substantially as well. But the work's not just in early literacy, also in math. In math, there's still work to do, but we are making gains. We saw a 6.1% increase in grades three, three through eight proficiency over the last two years, up to almost 40%. We were at 33% in 2001, 2002. So I think it's important to emphasize that we're encouraged by these numbers, but also we're not surprised. Over the last two years, we focused very deliberately on our four key priorities: excellence in foundational skills, great educators in every school, career empowerment and preparation, and success for every student. Our schools have incredible educators, leaders, and school support staff, and they're committed to focusing on the right thing and doing these priorities every day. We've also taken proactive steps to boost achievement, including investments in tutoring and high-quality instructional materials. The scores we saw last month are a direct result of these efforts, and I want to commend all of our team for all the hard work that they've done to get there. I know sometimes it feels like it's just numbers, but like behind every one of those numbers is a student and is a student who's learning to read earlier and getting on track to be able to graduate and be successful for us. So we really appreciate that. There's, there's hundreds of things that our staff can focus on every day when kids walk in the door, but they've chosen to have the discipline to focus on the right things. And I think that's why we're seeing these results. I also want to commend our business and talent team for their continuing to make salaries a priority. We are starting the school year this year, as we come into August, as Ms. Henderson just said, with the highest teacher and staff pay in our district's history. On an average, certified teachers saw an increase of approximately 10%. I know those raises were coming in just as they were all heading off to vacation. So we're anxious to see everyone in a few weeks with their, with their pay increases now that they've come live as far in July 1. Our teaching assistants also saw an average increase of approximately 8%, and our custodians saw an average increase of approximately 8%. This is the right thing to do and it acknowledges the dedication our teachers, of our, to our teachers and staff and what they bring to the classroom every day. This has only become more clear over the last two years as our district has seen student achievement continue to grow. There, there's a correlation there, right? Having the good teachers and staff members stick around and our students doing better as well. As I previously said, these gains are driven by educators and our hope is that this investment in our teachers' compensation makes it clear how much we value their work. I also want to acknowledge our talent acquisition department. Currently, of our 91 schools, only four are not 90% staffed. That's been, again, a lot of efforts on their part. I know two years ago when we launched that department, they were kind of, what will fruit would that bear? I think we're starting to see that happen. I really appreciate Alex Mosman and his team's leadership. This is a strong showing and it demonstrates the importance of creating the talent acquisition department. They continue to focus and have brought recruitment to pay strong dividends. It's been nice, too, to see people come from other places that want to be here. We've also had stories of people who were going to retire that have stuck around. So I think, one, they're, they're enjoying the work and seeing, you know, meaningful as students move forward. And I think this board continues to compensate them and continue to make that an offer. And finally, I would like to take a moment to recognize Ms. Christie Woods, who has officially started as Chief of Staff as of July 1. I'm very glad that she's here. Christie's a veteran educator, school leader, and she's already making a difference in the central office. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick. And welcome, Christie. We're so excited to have you. All right. Dr. Adams, do we have a custodial staffing update?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I am happy to announce that we've had a significant increase in applicants and, of course, I attribute that to the work of Ms. Hamagorn and her team and Ms. Hall and her team in their recruiting practices. We are currently at 56 openings. We own, we have zero schools at 50%, which is excellent. It's not where we want to be, but we are certainly making progress. And we have 49 schools that are fully staffed.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Adams. Mr. Triplet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For legislative update, Tennessee School Board Association holds its Summer Law Institute on the 19th and 20th of this month. And several of us will, several board members will be in attendance along with Mr. Dubler. And I know we'll have some updates after that event. And also, Mr. Dubler, I'm sure will take a look at policies and any changes we need to make to prepare for the next policy review meeting after, after that event.
Thank you. And our Strategic Planning Committee did meet this month. So I know Ms. Christie has an update for you guys.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did meet on Monday, June 25th, to discuss stakeholder engagement processes and timelines. Our vendor, Milan Chicago, were here in person for that meeting. The committee agreed that we do not want to exclude any ideas or issues from the engagement process, but we do want to kind of keep a focus on our four district priorities and a fifth area of focus around the student and family experience. And we had a lengthy discussion about what levels of data we wanted from the engagement processes and basically landed on wanting them broken down by grade bands, like elementary, middle, and high school. And also by region as well. So as far as those processes, the committee members also agreed that we would, I'm sorry, I lost my place, that we want the engagement surveys to be very intentional with mostly closed-ended questions with some open-ended response opportunities. And we confirmed that surveys will be available online and on paper with multiple translations. Since August is an extremely busy month for families, staff, and community, the goal will be to launch the engagement surveys to all groups the day after Labor Day, September 3. Milan Chicago representatives are meeting with Ms. Lautner and Mr. Rutter this week to discuss data logistics and with their regional directors and supervisors, including their preschool director, over the next couple of weeks. After those important conversations, they will formulate a draft survey, which the committee will receive week of July 22. The committee will meet again on Monday, August 12, with Milan Chicago representatives to finalize the survey, which we agreed should be distributed online through Parent Square, since their families, staff, and community are already familiar with that platform. While making paper copies easily available, the survey will remain open for approximately three weeks. The committee will continue to finalize engagement plans with their contracted vendor over the next couple of months with a goal of sharing data and information with the full board at our October 24 quarterly work session. I believe the RFP for a vendor to partner with on the strategic planning is also nearing completion. So hopefully, we will have further information to share during the next report.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Okay, moving on to our regular session agenda. We'll start with items and contracts. C, one or two? Three or four? Five or six? Seven or eight? Nine or 10? 11 or 12? Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a quick question regarding the disclosure with Pelisipi State. Am I correct in the understanding that this is only for students who are attending Pelisipi and they are, that they would have knowledge that it is being released to Pelisipi?
Dr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Horn. As far as their knowledge of it being released, these are students who are already connected with Pelisipi State, and that may be through already engaging in dual enrollment courses, things like that. Another way they may be engaged with Pelisipi State also, though, can be through some of our post-secondary visits that we're doing with the 865 Academies. U-Sign is one of the data points that's, that's talked about in there. And they, Pelisipi is making moves to make that a component they do with all their students. And so that one in particular, the sharing of that data, was just about streamlining that for students not having to sit through that assessment again. And so in that case, I thought it's kind of a layered answer to say what that engagement and what data would be shared would be kind of dependent on how they're engaging with the, with the program.
And it's only those Pelisipi students specifically?
Yes, this isn't in any way like an additional layer of recruitment. It's kids that are already kind of tracking those experiences. And it's, it's actually part of a larger piece we've been trying to look at with regards to our, our post-secondary kind of decision-making and tracking of students and really the impact of the, you know, things they engage in in the high school level and how that translates into the pathways and things that they both select and then stay on once they go into post-secondary. And that's pretty new work. That's, that's something always has been very hard to nail down, but it's part of, some stuff we're doing with Overgrad as an organization that we've done that with.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. 12 or 13? 14 or 15? 16 or 17? And 16, Cedar Bluff Middle School is on top of it for their eighth-grade dance for next year. I appreciate that organization. Let's see, 18? All right, moving on then to board policies. A or B? C or D? E? And these were discussed at policy review. Just to go. All right, then moving on to grants. A or B? C? Or D? All right, contracts, A or B? Moving on then, regular agenda items. A or B? Oh, Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry. You're on regular agenda item B, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I thought I would just, for anybody watching who maybe didn't have a chance to read through the, the consideration for naming the Fairgood High School Stadium in honor of Eddie Courtney, I thought I would just highlight a couple of things because he is beloved in the Fairgood community. And so if I have a moment to brag on him, I'm going to take it. So the naming committee reviewed an application for the Fairgood High School Stadium to be named the Coach Eddie Courtney Stadium, and I'm thankful that they've made the recommendation to accept this. Eddie Courtney served as a KCS PE teacher for 47, maybe even 48 years, with the last 28 as the head coach of the Admiral's Fair, Fairgood Football Team. The coach was the fifth-winningest coach in Tennessee, including a state championship in 2016. Evidence of his dedication of, is never missing a football game while he was undergoing cancer treatments during the 2005 football season. And for the 2023 season, he became the longest, longest-tenured football coach statewide at any public school and was recognized as the longest-serving teacher at KCS. The glowing recommendation letters received from several elected officials and community members are a sampling of heartfelt admiration felt by so many in the Fairgood community. I think Dr. Bartlett's summary on the application says it well. Coach Courtney has always led the team and students with the utmost respect and integrity. He modeled humility, strength, and perseverance in performance. He has been the role model and standard for the entire Fairgood community. As Representative Zachary said of Coach in his letter of recommendation, he has challenged, encouraged, and led his players to be better young men and students, placing as much emphasis on their personal development as he has their football skills. His impact on generations to come is without measure. Dr. Bartlett and Representative Zachary hit the nail on the head. The impact Coach Courtney has had on so many young men over the years is immeasurable and immense. I'm proud to lend my full support to naming the stadium I'm proud to lend my full support to naming the stadium in Coach Courtney's honor, and I would ask the board to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very sweet and exciting. C or D? D? Yes, Ms. Christie.
Oh, just on item C. I just want to thank Dr. Adams and Mr. Dillingham and Mr. Chover and for all their hard work on this. I know that Commissioner Daley and I both met with them several times. And it's been a learning experience for me. A lot goes into finding a piece of property to build a school on. But I do appreciate their patience and hard work on that.
Thank you. Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question on 10D. The five Ford Transit vans and one Ford pickup truck, are those replacements or are those new vehicles?
Madam Chair, Ms. Owen, so those are new vehicles. And when I say they're new vehicles, we've, I can get you a list of how many vehicles we actually went through the procurement process. But those are new vehicles.
So they're not replacing something we're getting rid of? These are additional vehicles?
Yes, these are vehicles that we had needed for quite some time and couldn't get our, couldn't get the vehicles. And so these are vehicles that we are now able to get.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. E? Or F? I do have some que, oh, go ahead, Ms. Owen.
I'm sorry, could we hear some more about the staff referral bonus program?
Madam Chair, Ms. Owen, sure, would be happy to answer any specific questions. But this is an idea to pilot for this year from our talent team. We know that the best advertisement for Knox County schools are those employees that work for us and are having a good experience. And we want to reward those employees that are helping us bring more great educators to fill our vacancies. So that's the intent.
And just for the folks who are watching from home and want to know what this is about, can you kind of talk about the process a little bit?
Sure. So program details, there will be, there's a staff referral online form, electronic form. Candidates that are referred to, in order for the current employee to get the bonus, candidates are the referral reward. Candidates that are referred must be new to KCS and must be employed in the position by August 9th. So to start the school year. And there is a tiered reward. So it's $150 for teachers in one to three years, with one to three years of experience, classified support staff, school leaders, et cetera, and then experienced teachers. So three or more years of experience as a classroom teacher or a certified teacher would be $250.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer and Jennifer. Okay, F. I do have a couple of questions about F. That was, I know that was a late addition to the agenda, increasing the cost of tickets for football and basketball games. So Dr. Wilson, can you kind of speak to that? I know Coach Brown, I know you as Coach Brown, is here too.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and Mr. Brown may come over here in just a second. Essentially, it's bringing our pricing structure and it's really setting a maximum, which falls under the board's authority to set the maximum ticket prices. But bringing our pricing structure into a more current and comparable pricing structure to several of the districts around us. If you have a chance, I know you have, but if others are interested, can look at the memo that's attached and really highlight several examples, I think, of how cost has changed dramatically since the last time we set ticket prices was 2015. Mr. Brown can tell you too. I think we had some intentions, and this was prior to either of us being in the role, but there were some intentions around 2020 to come to the board with a suggestion of this nature. And then we had COVID and it kind of never got lifted back up again. So it's kind of been an overdue item, I would say, for a little while. But as I said, it's really an attempt to recognize the cost of what it takes to officiate and hold these games and run effective programs. And from that, if, Brian, you've got some additional detail you'd like to add or respond to questions?
Well, we can respond to questions for sure. But Madam Chair, board members, the cost has just gone up dramatically for everything that we do in athletics. And to be able to sustain our programs, the ticket price increase is needed to be able to do that. If that isn't done, it raises fees for participants, which are already very high in some cases and would have some of our student athletes not participate because the fees would be higher. They wouldn't just not ask, they would just not show up and do it because those fees would be higher. So we want to try to keep those fees as low as we can, as well as support all of our programs. There's a few examples on that memo, but I could come up with 50 or 60 more where the prices are almost double or if not higher for items for, to run an athletic program.
I do have some questions, but I'll let Ms. Horn go ahead and.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had one question. My assumption is that the increase in funds stays at the local school. But I just wanted to verify that for anybody watching.
Correct. So gates for each of our athletic events stay in that school, in those accounts for those teams?
Thank you.
Mr. Dubler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Something that Mr. Brown and I talked about is that, you know, when, when the board policy and when we talk about maximum, what we're talking about there is that, you know, schools can give discounts for season tickets and things of that nature. But different schools, in Knox County schools, do not, do not need to be charging different prices, right? So, so once you set the maximum, so for instance, if it goes up to $10 for a football game, then it's going to be $10 across the district. Can all schools have a discount for a season ticket? Yes, but it needs to be consistent. And that's just.
And what he means there is if, if a student at Halls is paying $6 for a ticket and the visiting students show up and it's some or other students and they're 10 for that, there would be a large outcry from our families at different places because of that.
Is there a student price versus, like, would this $10, for example, bless you, be for adults and students?
Currently, there is not a differentiated price for students and adults. Some schools will charge less for students, or they will say for certain sports. I'll just say one of their fall sports is girls soccer. The first 50 students that show up can get in free or difference, to encourage students to attend lesser-attended events. But there is not a differentiation. Our price, as set by the board, is a maximum price that we can't exceed.
Okay. I've just been struggling with this. I mean, I completely, I think you did a great job with your memo. Thank you for breaking all that down. I think it really answered a lot of questions. And I do, I do recognize that all the prices are going up in everything. But the flip side to me is parents and families are also struggling because of rising prices of groceries and just everything else. So that's where I really struggle is from a family's perspective. If they have three kids and they're paying that every week. So, I don't know, I've been having a hard time with this, with this item. Also, I know it falls under policy I-171. I would, Ms. Courtney, like to bring that policy back because I know currently it's the board's decision. I would like to bring that policy back up for discussion at the next policy review and just see what it would look like and, you know, get everyone else's thoughts. If we did give that power to the superintendent and Coach Brown and instead of doing like a price, maybe embedding in there like a market value formula. So that way, Coach Brown, like, say next year, we have to raise prices again, or in two years or five years, you, that decision-making power is with you and there's just a formula, whether that's the average of the surrounding counties. I'd like to see that brought back up in policy review if possible. Does anybody else have any questions, or Coach Brown? Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of comments. I agree with you that I would like to see some kind of student price. I think that would help families a lot. And I wanted to thank Dr. Wilson for the background. In my mind, we had already done this. So I appreciate that you let us know where, where that was. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Watson.
Coach Brown, is there, was there consider, is there consideration or has there been consideration in the past about setting the student price? Is that something other districts do? And is that even possible to have two different pricing scales?
It's very difficult to have two different prices for our people that are working our gates. And all of the other school systems around us right now have gone up and they have set theirs. There are certain, again, certain sports will do that to try to attract more students.
Sure.
Typically, football and basketball don't do that because they're the most well-attended events in their school. But for a softball game, or a soccer game, or sometimes baseball, they will have incentive prices for students to attend. It does just make it a little bit more difficult. I know we do have a few schools that are going, going to try to go cashless this fall, which makes it easier to do. But again, this ticket price is a maximum set by our board. Schools can choose to have lower for students if they so choose. Or if they sell at lunch up until Wednesday of a Friday football game, they could do that. And that would be not as hard on them as two different prices at the gate with that already.
Sure, I appreciate that. But what I'm hearing from Mr. Dubler is even though it's a maximum price, the suggestion would be to not beer from that, correct?
That's what I'm hearing too.
Not necessarily. I mean, not exactly. I mean, what I'm, what I'm recommending to the board and to the school system in general is that we have to be consistent. So, so in other words, if you're going to go with a student price, then it has to be consistent across the district. And we can't have one school, and I'm not going to name schools, but we can't have one high school saying, no discounts, no way, no how, and another school offering multiple discounts. It has to be consistent.
Coach Brown, have you seen other districts set a flat student rate in addition to an adult rate? Or is that just not common practice?
It's just not common practice. These other districts around us are, have all gone to the 10-8-6 model. Some of them are actually 10-8-7. Elko is 10-8-7. Anderson County is 10-8-7. And three other districts that have not gone up are kind of waiting to see what happens here. And they will probably ask for recommendations to move up to this same price so that everyone in the area, when you travel to different places, are the same price at each venue.
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Christie.
I just have a couple of questions. So have you, is this something that you, I'm assuming, have discussed with their athletic directors? The burden of travel is always on the school, right?
Correct.
So I guess my question is, when you look at all of our teams that went to state this year, and we had several, yay, Knox County. But each of those schools had to come up with the money for transportation.
Correct.
And travel costs. And that, that's a really heavy lift, I'm assuming.
So the average cost of a team that, at Spring Fling, if they were there for four days, is about $10,000 to $12,000 they had to come up with outside of their normally budgeted monies. So this could help offset that dramatically for those teams that are good enough to go. And there's teams that go there regularly and plan for some of that. But even they struggle to meet that extra cost because it is much more now. I mean, the busing cost, when you go over two hours, most people take charter buses. Those have gone up almost double or triple the cost. And when you go overnight, you pay for that room, you pay per diem for that driver, it just adds up very quickly.
Right. And when our soccer team went to state this year, we did thankfully have Emerald Youth Foundation, who provided transportation for us. But that, that was a burden to them to come up with those.
For those four days, it probably would have been an additional $6,000 to $8,000 for transportation alone.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I mean, having been on both sides of this as a parent with a student athlete and attending and, you know, giving money to kids or whatever to attend games, it certainly is expensive for the players and their families. And it can get even more expensive when you have additional travel for state and that kind of thing. So I wish that we didn't need to do this, but, but obviously, prices have increased. So I kind of see this as, you know, you're passing on those, that burden to people that are coming. And I hate that we have to do it, but I, it seems like it probably would be necessary at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Coach Brown. Appreciate it. Item G. I know that was a late add as well. And Dr. Wilson, can you kind of speak to this? Because this is the first time we've seen an item like this on our agenda.
Sure. Part of that is why it's a late, a late add. So as you may remember from some of our conversations around charter in earlier meetings, they have the ability to ask for certain waivers around certain requirements from the state. One of those is in relation to instructional materials they use in the classroom curriculum. And so for the past history of Emerald Academy, going back, they have used wit and wisdom as their curriculum for their early-lit K through 2 grade bands. And so they followed the same process this year, as my understanding, that they had followed in years past, submitted the request for that waiver to the state directly. State law allows for that, or for the LEA to be the one that grants that waiver. And so having done that, and then some amount of time passing by between it being submitted and then getting feedback from the state, the feedback that came back was that the state had made some changes structurally and now wanted the LEA to be the authorizing, one that would require, or would approve that waiver, I should say. The board would approve that waiver. And so that sort of left us in a position of not having done that in the past. It left them in the position of needing an approved curriculum to begin their work for this year, finish their literacy plan, all the things that they're required to do by the state. And they're actually held up a little late on that, but the state understands the time crunch they've put them in, and so we're in that. So Teresa and her team, working with Dr. Phillips, went to look at the waiver process the state uses, adapted that for our own local purposes in order to bring a recommendation regarding the waiver for those instructional materials to the board. So this is a new process. It's not one that we have typically carried forward. Give kudos to Teresa and to Dr. Phillips for both moving quickly to, to put a process together that, that would be one that could serve us in the future, should we need that. And this waiver in particular is just for a single year in, in terms of kind of looking at the, because they've been using this as a, as a tool, we want to give them the ability to continue to do that on this short timeframe.
Okay. Is there a reason they don't use curriculum that's state-approved? Like, why did they choose this way?
Well, even, even if you go back to, I guess, I want to say last school year, I think it was, we shifted some of our elementary schools and actually one of our middle schools, maybe two of our middle schools, off of wit and wisdom. The, the shift at elementary, as I understand it, and Dr. Phillips, I think she had to step out for a few, she may not be here. She could answer that question later on. But I think the, the core component that makes wit and wisdom fall in that non-approved list is that structured foundational skills element that goes into like the phonemic awareness and all of those pieces. When we use that in our school settings, we had an additional component, there she is. We had an additional component that we used with that. I think it was foundations. But it was not part of the packaged curriculum that came with wit and wisdom. And so that's why it's not on the list. It's not to say that they don't offer a fundamental foundational skills component. It's just not part of the package with wit and wisdom. And so I'm probably way over my head and deep water on explaining that. If anybody would like to talk about wit and wisdom curriculum, Dr. Phillips?
I was just curious why they choose to use this.
Sure. So back in the adoption cycle, wit and wisdom was on the list for the knowledge demand strand and listed as a curriculum that is comprehensive for grades 3 through 8. However, it is not comprehensive for grades kindergarten through 2nd because it does not have a foundational literacy component that teaches the fundamentals of learning to read. It focuses on the reading comprehension strand of the standards more heavily and the writing strand of the standards more heavily than it focuses on the foundational literacy strands or the speaking and listening strands. That being said, they do have a supplemental resource that they are using in conjunction with wit and wisdom to support their K-2 students in learning to read and achieving those foundational literacy standards. One of the things that we, Teresa and I have talked a lot about is this concept of instructional coherence and how over time, we might want to support them in understanding how when you have a comprehensive curriculum where foundational literacy naturally speaks to reading comprehension, it has a coherent model that might support students in grasping those foundational literacy standards more quickly and at a level of mastery. But they are supplementing with a foundational literacy component to build up the capacity for kids to learn to read.
Okay. Would it be possible to get the last few years of data on this particular, for these grades in this particular program? With that, can I get that?
Yeah, I believe so. The last few years?
For kindergarten through 2nd? So the data that. So, the data that you would have access to is not that's, like, a statewide standardized assessment. It would be more of that universal screener-level data?
Yeah.
That shows us the prerequisite skills that children need in order to learn to read.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? All right. Moving on, Mr. Triplet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a couple of speakers. Gordon Gibson. Gordon, if you'll state your name and county residence, and you will have three minutes.
Okay. I'm Gordon Gibson, a resident of Knox County. You've heard a lot from Moms for Liberty. Maybe you should think of me as grandfather for libraries. Libraries, I believe, should of course be repositories of learning, answering questions students have. Libraries should also be sources of stimulation, raising questions students have not thought of yet on their own. We live in a time when these qualities of libraries are under attack. I'm proud that the church I attend has responded to the diminishment and narrowing of books available in classrooms by hosting the Children's Diversity and Justice Library. This library collection includes books in which children encounter characters who look like them, have issues like them, and have backgrounds like them. Books, in other words, which may have been stripped from school bookshelves, because they may deal with immigration, racism, sexism, homophobia, and other very real issues. Your hands are tied by poor decisions made by Tennessee legislators. This grandfather for libraries is asking you to slow down, take a hard look, and make sure that you are adopting policies that are no more constricting of the books available to our students than those policies absolutely legally must be. And then, please make it a priority to let our legislators know that they have moved far beyond the limits of their competence with, among other things, legislation on school libraries and instructional materials. Libraries, as I said at the beginning, should raise questions that students have not thought of on their own. Be sure that our school libraries send students more deeply into the complexities of American history. Even though racism, dispossession of native people, and economic inequality are unpleasant topics, we cannot understand our history fully if we do not think about such issues. Libraries should answer questions that students have. Certainly some legitimate and important questions about human development, sexuality, and human relations are left unanswered in abstinence-only sex education. Try to keep as many usefully informative books on the shelves as possible to answer some of these questions. If you don't help students get answers, they will turn to their poorly-informed friends, or just look at the first thing that pops up in a Google search. Thank you.
Michael O'Malley. Michael, if you'll state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
Sure. Michael O'Malley, Knox County. This is regarding the I-241 school libraries policy. I know you'll have to comply with the Age Appropriate Materials Act and the changes that have been made to it by the legislators, so I'm not asking you to reject this policy, but some of the discussion at policy review did kind of bother me. I'm an English teacher at Carter High School and a Christian, and at policy review, Mr. Dupler indicated to the Board that the law would not remove the Bible from libraries, because the Bible doesn't describe sexual acts in detail, and as an English teacher and a Christian, I would encourage you all to take another look at how much detail the Bible uses. I'll use just a few passages that might create challenges, for an example. There's Genesis, Chapter 38, Verse 39, which talks about a man named Onan, quote, "Whenever he slept with his brother's wife, he spilled his semen on the ground to keep from providing offspring for his brother." Leviticus, Chapter 15, 16 through 18, describes how to clean yourself up after sex, quote, "When a man has an emission of semen, he must bathe his whole body with water, and he will be unclean till evening. Any clothing or leather that has semen on it must be washed with water and will be unclean till evening. When a man has sexual relations with a woman, and there is an emission of semen, both of them must bathe with water, and they will be unclean till evening." Ezekiel 23, 20 to 21, uses an extended sexual metaphor to describe Israel, quote, "She lusted after her lovers whose genitals were like those of donkeys, and whose emission was that of horses. So, you longed for the lewdness of your youth, when in Egypt your bosom was caressed and your young breasts fondled." The revision of the Age Appropriate Materials Act states that material with sexual conduct must not be maintained in a school's library collection. I have to say, descriptions of ejaculation, breast fondling, and a penis the size of a donkey's sure sound like they fit the bill. During policy review, Ms. Horn said that she doesn't think the law was intended to get rid of the Bible, and I do agree. However, we follow the letter of the law and not the intention. This law is written in a careless and indiscriminate manner that omits any consideration of the literary, historical, or religious value of a text. I have a lot to say about how contextually the sexual content of the Bible has some merit, and perhaps some of you do too, but our legislators have not permitted us to make those justifications. I hate the idea of the Bible or any other text of value being locked away from student access, which is the opposite of what we as educators should be doing. If you don't like the Bible being taken out of school libraries, perhaps you should tell our legislators how destructive their handiwork is. But if KCS believes, as policy review indicated, that the Bible should stay on library shelves, that seems to me like a violation of law. I've seen a lot of people come before this Board and complain about passages in books that are not any more explicit than what I've read to you all from the Bible, and some of you all on the Board have expressed outrage at the allegedly inappropriate materials in our school libraries. So if you don't think that the new law applies to the Bible, I guess I have to ask, why does my Christian scripture get a pass? Do you all actually care about sexual content in books, or does it only bother you when gay, or trans, or contemporary black and brown authors do it? Thank you.
That concludes public forum.
Thank you. Moving on to Board forum. Reverend Butler? Hello, sir. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to bring something to the attention of the administration that I forgot to do earlier. I've had some calls about the calendar for '25-'26. I know it's way off. There's a half-day that is December 22nd, that's a Monday, and so people are now noticing that that's a Monday half-day before break, and they have a lot of concerns about that, and lots of, lots of "I'm not showing up" that days. So, if we could take a look at that sometime, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll say this, because Dr. Wilson talked to me about that today, and he might be able to explain that, or you might want to follow up later with it, but I think, I think it was, it was a choice of the lesser of two evils, I believe, would it end up being.
Yeah, and, and I'm, again, always happy to go back and look at additional options and things like that. It's a pretty long process that we go through to come up with three options to bring to a committee to begin with, and it's, it's easy to say it's a hard year, but I, we, even as we were talking today, like, if you start looking out into the future, you're, you'll see, like, when we get into this year, for example, Memorial Day, for the '25-'26 calendar, Memorial Day is on the 25th, that's the final Monday of the month. What that means for us is, we typically get out before Memorial, Memorial Day, is we've lost a whole week, because the next year, it's on the 31st, so we've lost a whole week to play within that, and that begins to really back things up and affect things like length of Christmas break and, and those sorts of, of different items. So, again, you, there's some complexity just depending on how days fall. It has been typical practice that we do not bring teachers back prior to August 1st. It's been typical practice. We don't bring teachers back after Memorial Day, and when you start to balance that window of time into what you're trying to fit in, election days, in-service days, all the things that you're doing, you're not left with a whole lot of wiggle room and play, and so, the, the decision, I think, and kind of the critical point where we fell out on those options, was we had, you know, that, that Monday, coming back for the half-day before Christmas break, or we had in a scenario where we were going to probably be bringing teachers back on the Tuesday after Memorial Day to do their last day of the school year. That are also, in that consideration, is the balance of academic days across the two semesters. You don't want to have, you know, five or six days difference between what, how many days are in your fall semester versus your spring semester, and moving one day one each of the way can, can affect that. So, we have certainly looked at and considered lots of things around that, and I'm always happy to go back and look at that again to see what those options might be, but, you know, we, we followed the procedure that we have always typically followed in terms of convening a group that's made up of central office and school-level folks, parents as well, and, and brought them options that we felt like were the, the least evil of, of the group, and, and came out with a, a vote that went with the calendar that we adopted, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I've also talked to some people who were on those committees, and I, I think they would like to have had a lot more input into possibilities than just the three, so maybe we could look at that somewhere along the way. I know there are a lot of people who are very concerned. They, they sort of feel like they're losing three days of holiday travel, so I know they would very much appreciate having a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Watson? Mr. Triplet? Ms. Pike?
Thank you. I'm going to keep with my pattern of the things that we're celebrating this month. July 4th, like we talked about, is the day the Continental Congress adopted the Declaration of Independence in 1776, and it began being signed on August 7th, 1776? Second. But the Revolution, American Revolutionary War didn't end until 1783, and I think that's just something, as an adult, to revisit and think about, is really interesting, the years that go by, because we often just think of July 4th, and that was independence, but it actually took a whole lot more than that. And then also, in the month of July, we celebrate Disability Pride Month, and disability pride can be described as accepting and honoring each other's uniqueness and seeing it as a natural and beautiful part of human diversity. On July 26, 1990, the Americans with Disabilities Act was the world's first comprehensive civil rights law for people with disabilities. President George Bush signed the Americans with Disabilities Act in a ceremony on the South Lawn of the White House. And I think that I, I, a story that I'm going to try to make very quickly is, I was partially running an event, and we had invited some adaptive, different types of adaptive persons to attend and to be a part of a forum on a stage, and that hadn't been done for that event before, and we realized that, obviously, steps were not going to suffice, and that we had to build a ramp, and last minute built a ramp, and then realized that actually, the ramp saved us all from going up and down the stairs through the whole event, and that it was actually a benefit to all of us to have the ramp, and I like to think of that, of when we use inclusion, and we include everyone, that we actually all benefit from something like that, and the, how I've seen this in Knox County schools, and where I'm really appreciative of our teachers, is looking at each of their classrooms and what they do with lighting, and the general feel of the environment of the classroom, and I'm really appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Horn? Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie? All right. Reverend Butler?
I apologize, but I did come up with something that I remembered that we probably needed to at least put on our mind, and that is the November meeting, November 7th. We have a scheduled meeting, but that's also the TSBA Leadership Conference, so we...
Oh, it's earlier this year, huh?
Yeah, so we might want to take a look at that and talk about how we would do that.
Yeah, how make both of us work, huh? Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We are adjourned. See you all Thursday.